Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, guys, this is our first, we're gonna take care of our annual reorganization, Board of Trustees and employees for the period of January 1 of '22 through December 31st of '22. And as you can see on your agenda, items A, B, and C are the election of this year's president, vice president, and secretary. So we'll start with any nomination for either new election or reelection of the office of president.
I'll make Chris Shaw for president.
Nomination by Patrick, second by Cindy, do you accept?
Yes.
That's it, you're in. All right, vice president, nomination for vice president.
I'll make Patrick.
Second.
Second by Crystal, Mr. Redmond, you accept? All right, there we go there. Treasure. I'm sorry, secretary, secretary. I'm back on the Farm Bureau board for a second, my fault. Wrong board. Secretary, Crystal.
I'll nominate her, I'll second.
Second. Crystal, third, you accept, Crystal?
Sure.
All right, that's good. Right, item D, establishment of board compensation is per the resolution in your packet, it was the same amount as last year. We'll need a...
Make a motion.
We need to do that, do all those on the grid.
Yeah.
So Patrick, second by Crystal. All right.
Cindy. Second by Cindy.
You want some coffee?
Davey.
Jan. Jan.
Five oh.
Five oh, thank you, Chris. Item D, established mileage, presently MCS pays 50 cents per mile, I would recommend keeping it at the same amount.
I make that motion.
Correct. Cindy makes the motion, Patrick seconds.
Steve.
All in favor, five oh. All right, appointment of treasurer, deputy treasurer, extracurricular treasurer, and deputy extracurricular treasurer, I recommend we keep the same slate as last year, and that's Ms. Melinda Powell be appointed treasurer. For MCS, Ms. Ruthie Ling be appointed as deputy treasurer. Mrs. Sunny Chaney appointed extracurricular treasurer, and Mrs. Kim Powell be appointed as deputy extracurricular treasurer.
I make that motion.
Cindy makes the motion, Patrick seconds, five oh. Appointment of board member and administrators to serve on MCS insurance and school wellness committee, since that is such a smooth running committee, I recommend the same. Mrs. Brookings as a representative from the school board, myself and Ms. Jones to represent the board of trustees on the MCS insurance committee. Steve Burton makes a motion, Patrick seconds, five oh. Appointment of local education agency officer, I recommend you reappoint the superintendent to this position. Patrick makes a motion, Crystal seconds, all in favor, five oh. This is gonna be a tricky one, appointment of school attorney, I recommend we reappoint Mr. Greg Pittman to continue to serve as our school attorney. Patrick makes a motion, Cindy seconds.
Got any discussion?
Mr. Pittman? No discussion, five oh. Item J, disposition of accounts payable voucher docket, there is a copy of that resolution attached. The passing of this resolution permits board members to review vouchers, approve their payment by vote, and then sign the docket to record the board's actions concerning all vouchers considered. The docket each member would need to sign each voucher individually, I recommend the passage of this resolution. Mr. Burton makes a motion. Mr. Redmond seconds, five oh. Declaration of conflict interest, if there's any member that may have a conflict of interest, should complete the form and pass it this way. Designation, item L, designation of newspaper and qualified publications for Mitchell Community School. Indiana Code 5-3-1-4 requires that the board of trustees designates a local newspaper as their primary news publication. I recommend that the Bedford Times Mail be Mitchell Community Schools designated newspaper. Mr. Burton makes a motion, Patrick seconds, five oh. Item M, disposition of investment of funds resolution, again, a copy of that resolution was included, included in your packet. This document clarifies who is authorized to invest funds on behalf of the school. I recommend keeping the present authority in place. Mr. Redmond makes the motion, Ms. Brookings seconds, five oh. Item N, access to Mid-Southern Hoosier Hills Credit Union accounts resolution, a resolution to allow the superintendent to make adjustments as needed, those accounts. Mr. Burton makes a motion, Mr. Redmond seconds, five oh. Item N, establishments of dates, times, and location for regular board meetings. The current regular meetings of the board are held on the second Monday of each month at 6:00 PM at the Emerson Administration Center located at 441 North 8th Street in Mitchell, Indiana. Location of the regular meetings may change to a school campus if deemed necessary and will be advertised accordingly. The continuation of this arrangement works fine with, if it works fine with this administration, I recommend that we continue the present date and time of regular meeting. Mr. Burton makes a motion, Mr. Redmond seconds, five oh.
Declaration that the Mitchell Board of Trustees is reorganized for the period of January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022. It's in the agenda, sir.
All right, I recommend or give to the board items A, B, C, D, E, and F for approval. Makes that motion, Steve seconds, all in favor, five oh.
Items for consideration, national board of trustees personnel, Ms. Jones.
All right, Mr. Smoot and I are recommending Jeff Routh for the position of Mitchell High School night shift Class C custodian, effective January 4th. Mr. Wagner and I are recommending Chris Thompson for the position of Mitchell Community Schools athletic trainer, effective January 11th. And then Mr. Wagner, Mrs. May, and I are recommending the following athletic, extracurricular athletic positions. We have Isaac Brown for music department accompanist. Hannah Tao for seventh grade baseball coach. Zach C. and Danny Reynolds for co-assistant baseball coaches. Chris Bowles for a volunteer baseball position, Logan Gore volunteer baseball. Allison Kern and Zach Kern as co-Mitchell Junior High School golf coaches. Dustin Modulin, seventh grade softball coach. Rich Little, eighth grade softball coach. And Alyssa Mahan as a volunteer softball position. And then we'd like to notify that Danny Reynolds will be transferring from interim transportation director to transportation director effective January 11th.
Steve makes that motion, Patrick seconds, all in favor, five oh, sir. Item B. All right, item B, disposition of recommendation to approve final exemption, final exam exemption for grades ninth through 12. A copy of that proposal for Mr. Pritchett was in the packet, and it's just an added incentive to continue to increase attendance and complete assignments and good behavior at the high school. Patrick makes that motion, Steve seconds, all in favor, five oh. Item C. Item C, recommendation to approve the pay scale changes for non-certified staff. All those were included within your packet. I can, if one, Chris, I can answer any questions on those, it's pretty uniform across the board on those. There's no questions or any qualifications I need to provide, I just submit. Patrick makes that motion, Crystal seconds, all in favor, five oh. Item D. Okay, item D, disposition of recommendation to approve pay scale changes for transportation director, athletic director, food service manager, and administrators, much the same with the non-certified packets. Mr. Shaw, I'll be glad to answer any questions, but if not, I would recommend that's provided. Patrick makes that motion, Crystal seconds, all in favor, five oh. Item E. Item E, disposition of recommendation for permission to post an afternoon bus route supervisor. That person would be, for lack of a better phrase, the go-to person during afternoon routes. It would be the pay as was described in your packet, the pay for that position after speaking with our new transportation director. The pay for that position, that's not, it won't create any more taxing on our budget. It was just the exact amount of that salary for this new position would come from the transportation director. And that was already deducted with the price you saw on your packet. Steve seconds, all in favor, five oh.
How long are we gonna post that for?
Typically, it's close for...
At least a week.
A week, okay.
I'm just curious.
Item F. Item F, disposition of recommendation to approve special needs director and special needs secretary MOU. You did sign an MOU previously for this, this is with some, it's a new MOU that needs to be signed because in there it's described how our special needs director and secretary, how their raises would be affected, would go based on whatever the Mitchell administrators were. And that wasn't clearly defined in the previous MOU. So Dr. Dykstra, myself, and Mr. Ellis authored a new MOU for all three districts. We would be the first, and then Mr. Ellis would be next, and then Candace with Shelves would be third. Steve seconds, all in favor, five oh, sir. Items for discussion by the board trustees, item A. Item A, it's just a quick reminder that as soon as this regular session meeting concludes, we will have our annual finance meeting immediately after this meeting. Then B is just your annual, just FYI, avoiding uncashed checks. We did include, just for courtesy, a list of those checks in the packet for everyone to see. Item C, Mr. Pittman, I'm also gonna take over item C and D. Kind of give an update on the vaccine, where the federal vaccine mandate policy currently is. And then also, Mr. Pittman, the property and here that the district owns as well, that's for sale.
On the COVID mandate, right now, a case being considered by the United States Supreme Court. They've heard some arguments today and waiting on some guidance from them, and really from them on that. So it's not being enforced right now, but we need to be prepared to adopt a policy once that one comes out and we know which way it goes, obviously depending on the ruling. So right now, the deadline for compliance is February 9th, and again, that's on hold. Technically, it went into effect last week, but it's not being enforced, so. I've got a policy kind of based on what OSHA's regulation states. So I've got a policy started. Dr. Comer and I'll work together to be prepared to present that if we need to get a special meeting, if we need to at the beginning of the month. On the hearing properties, we have posted notice of the sale. That ran in the paper December 21st and 28th as required by statute. Minimum bids for the tracks are $180,500 for track number one and track number 250,000 that you approved last month. Bids, the bid acceptance period began December 19th and will run through February 14th at 4:00. So anyone interested in bidding on that can submit a bid for either parcel or boat before that deadline. Then those will be opened at our February meeting. After that, just so it's clear, if we were to have more than one bid, anyone who submits a bid would have the opportunity to increase their bid for a period up to 60 days after the bid opening. So if we got four or five bids, then we could go back to those four or five betters and allow one of them to raise their bid, kind of an auction style after that, so to ride at the highest bidder.
They have 60 days?
We'd be able to continue the bid process through 60 days following the bid opening. Can't do any longer than 60. Probably wouldn't take 60.
I think that's it, unless you have a question. Have you, can you bid yet? I've had a number of phone calls, but I haven't received any official bid of any kind. Item E, just wanted to publicly congratulate Mitchell High School, and overall, it's a win for Mitchell Community Schools, because we, as we know, we own that graduation rate when it's not too great, and we own it when it improves. And this year, I think credit goes to the district, high school, and the rest of the district, everyone involved. But Mitchell Community Schools saw nearly a 13% increase in graduation rate from last year. So that's something we should all celebrate and be very, very proud of. We're working hard to get some things in place. I know Jess and her team have worked tremendously hard on the early warning system. That's, we're getting going on that, and that's a, that's a team win. That's a, that's a good district win, everybody involved. So I think we should definitely celebrate that. And then just one last thing, then I'm gonna turn it over to our main act for the evening, Mr. Link, tonight. But I just want to remind everyone that this Friday night, we'll have, between the JV and varsity game, we'll have our first class of Hall of Fame members be inducted into the Mitchell Hall of Fame. And I showed examples of the proofs of what those classes are gonna look like. I think they look real great, and every family is gonna be represented that evening, so. So it should be a real, real good night, we're excited. All right, Mr. Link, is all yours.
I'm hoping that my part in tonight will be very short. I want to introduce on my design team, Mr. Bill Rigert with Bloods over here, your cause and James.
Cooper and James.
Cooper and James, sorry. I still want to go back to Bloods over here. Bill and I have worked together for at least 20 years, if not longer. He does pretty much all of my K-12 work for us, and he does dabble at IU with my partner Sarah. But he's here tonight to start talking about, a little bit about the traffic. He's got some layouts that he's gonna share with you, and with the ultimate goal to hopefully get some direction tonight, saying, yeah, that's the direction we want to go, so we can get this thing ready to go out to bid and hopefully have it constructed this summer on it. So with that, I'll turn over to you, Bill.
Good evening, guys. I brought some plans, half-sized drawings that I thought I'd share with everybody, and then I can try to explain what created this. This is an aerial image, so we need to reference that, make sure you get your eyes on the two elementary school campuses.
Think you're gonna cooperate?
I understand.
Thanks, Bill.
You're welcome. And then we've got some preliminary layouts. These are, these are half-sized ones, so they're two-scale, just if you're curious. So it's double that, so instead of 40, it's actually only a scale. But this is one of the potential options, I guess, the layout. And then we've got a second option to try to give some additional space. So I get, do you want to start maybe with the one or one of two, which is... We have one of two, which is two, so one of two is just a true square around the Hatfield campus rather than that snaking. And in the notes, under the vehicle stacking notes, we have plan four, actually, there's five plan notes, but plan notes one and two apply to Burris. And note number one is for single lane, note number two would be additional vehicles that could double stack. And then three and four apply to Hatfield. So what we did is we measured the length around the parking lot, divided it by 22, say a nice ample parking space for cars, it could be less with smaller cars, or 20 feet maybe. But if we just take 22 as a conservative number to try to estimate the number of cars that could stack primarily at pickup, would be in the afternoon when the parents come to pick the kids up. If we run, if we look at Burris first, we can get 56 vehicles around the roof. And then if we add a second lane, we can pick up an additional 55. So you have a total of 111 pickup parking spaces. And then applying the same thought to Hatfield, we'd have a single row at 74 and a double row around that outer roof for just being the main parking area of an additional 49. So that brings us to a total of 123 cars. One thing we're doing on these two parking lots on Burris, we're having to stack cars through the playground area to pick up those additional spaces. If we just stay within the parking lot itself, we could probably accommodate 49, so.
Do we have any idea, have we done any study on what it looks like over there at the pool and stuff? I don't know. So we don't know what kind of backlog we have now.
Yeah, I didn't even look over, and that's the public pool to the south. Yeah, no, I didn't, because that were, I'm not real familiar with that. And then they have to come down the road.
So we don't really have a count of, right now, how many cars do go through pickup lines, right?
We've got a rough estimate of the number of kids that are car riders.
But we don't know what's on the road that...
Well, it changes from day to day on how many actual vehicles. It stays pretty consistent, the number of students that get picked up. But sometimes you'll see five kids get in a car, and then the next day, you'll see five separate cars picking up those same five kids.
Is there some way we could get, whether that's Danny Paul or whatever, some kind of eyes on them that we would know?
Months worth of, or two weeks or something, and then average it out, so.
Yeah, just what's our worst-case scenario, you know? Is there 111 cars gonna, or spaces gonna take it? You know, if our big day's 130, well, 19 cars off.
And how do you determine who parks on the right and who parks on the left? Is there, like, what's the pattern of...
And when you get to McDonald's.
There'd have to be something to make it concerning, the numbers, and what we're looking at.
Operation, I probably, I'm familiar with MCS, see how it works. And generally, it's the principle that establishes the rules, and if our parents adhere to that or they're maybe not allowed to follow, or follow through. But generally, they line up as they arrive, and then they'd be, you'd take turns, you know, one to the left and the right.
These look good, and you've got good numbers here, but we need to know what numbers we're stacking against.
Bill, I mean, in any option the board looks at choosing, we're gonna have to look at double stacking in any configuration at some point, we'll have to double stack.
I think so.
Now, I'm concerned about the double stacking at the pickup, I mean...
That's what I was getting ready to ask, when the, when the cars actually come up to where the kids get in, that'll go down to a single file at that point.
Yes, yes, so when, where that, and I'm not real sure where the kids get loaded up, but if it's at Hatfield, and it's, we may have to back it up to where that little ramp is, because I'm not sure which door they come from.
Round both of them.
Right there, where you got red, that's where it needs to be.
Okay.
Down the wall.
And I don't think, because they're not all there at 3:00, you know, 110.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Shockingly, a bulk are, no matter how...
I was gonna say, bulk of them are there by 2:30.
We have all, we have all the eyes to the cows come home.
Oh, I have to.
If people would just wait to even head that way and get in line at 3:05 instead of trying to get there at 2:30, you could almost pull right up to the door with no waiting and let your kid in. But instead, Jess, we've got, we've got people to show up, Paul, we've got...
12:30.
12:30, first car starts in Hatfield.
That's crazy. You don't have to look for your kid or anything.
Different challenges, cost-wise, with one versus the other.
Yeah, yeah. Those challenges were going back, going around the park.
Yeah.
And paving and doing some things.
Well, and some, you know, we talked about, we're doing playgrounds, so there's some...
Is there geographical issues too? Because when I, you know, asked about this six years ago, I was told there was sinkholes and things like that.
Well, we, we could look at the topography, looking at the topo, we did. I don't see any apparent sinkholes.
Yeah, I know what the geography was.
But to take a look at it and make sure, if there's a closed contour, there's the potential for a sinkhole. I noticed in the aerial image, there looked like there were two areas where water was standing to the north, and I don't know if those are sinks.
Any question for Paul and his bunch over there?
Well, and Bill, just for the record, see, George is the smartest guy in the room. This is the one he wanted you to come to, because all the others, we didn't have this much discussion on anything else. And when he came to car drop off pickup, we knew that one was gonna be a lot of, a lot of talk. Hey, Danny, one question I ask, and it's, Bill, if I'm looking at the proposals correctly, it looks like in both, we would at some point be going back behind the current bus barn for pickup. Is that gonna be an issue as far as getting buses in and out of there?
There are two major issues there. The one where the bus drivers park, we've got a double lane of cars there, which would be on the south end of the transportation facility. And then my concern would be is bus drivers that arrived at various times backing buses out with a double line of cars there. Of course, there's no guarantee there'll be a double line of cars right there, but I think we have to plan on that. And then how do we get out of the transportation facility with a double line of cars there, the yellow bus?
And has anybody looked at the north side, or is that just a no-go? With, say, with the drive coming in this way and around this way? Has anybody looked at that?
No, I could look at that, is a possible option.
It would keep them...
Are you talking about off of Hamilton?
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 no. Right there at the, at the fence with Aka or whatever it is. Because there's a... At this fence row right here. And coming in that way.
Maybe even have a separate drive.
Or even coming in and having the cars, well, then they would back up in front of the buses where the buses parked here. But having a separate drive off of the two.
And then coming down like this.
Something like that.
At least we keep them, we keep them out of the bus terminal.
Someone would have to be right there to do it.
I know, it would cost a lot more. Could have rode down through. But you also would have other directional traffic coming out, and that, that way then, all the traffic coming up here would be going one way.
That's correct, yes.
None of what you could do with that is you could really gate that roadway off to where it's only accessible certain times of day, so.
Who would the buses?
Playground up there, you don't have to worry about a pickup, because all the kids are in school.
We have the bus problem with flooding, and I think that's all high area, I believe. That's all high, so.
Even if you came around the walkway and then came up to the parking lot that way.
Come in this way, right? And then come around, and you would pick up here.
Beer coming.
Instead of exiting out here, and if you've got to go to Burris, you go this way.
Maybe you would go all the way around the walkway.
If you don't need to go to Burris, you go that way.
Yeah, whatever.
Could you drive that way?
There is ditches and...
So everyone, no matter if you're... Regardless whether you're in Hatfield or Burris.
No, I don't know, I mean, I guess you could, I don't know.
You build a building right through the middle, and that's where all the kids.
Well, see, that's what I thought, that both of the schools would go that way. Instead of, you know, and then... But I always thought, I always, this would be around there. But we might also... I come out, I'm on about the same time every day.
Somebody going here, step right back here.
They're only on two of your...
Sometimes, they're, they're only on two cars.
Say, you know, we're not.
Like he says, it's.
Which is. First be. And then you take your, I don't know, you spin on at the appropriate.
And we're going around the bus barn, would that take us?
Might also be.
Those cars or?
Lots of issues, cause they.
It's, I think it's filled.
No place for the bus drivers to park.
Cause there's a house here, but I don't, but they know.
And they're packing buses out.
But if they only give one lane, instead we stop them, stack them, and we just went one.
I don't see cars on the street.
Until you get them coming from the wrong way on Hancock and cutting everybody out.
Not everybody.
I was gonna say, I've never been there when they actually pick up, I'm just there.
Not everybody goes in the pool like they're supposed to, some of them still sit on Hancock, and then you've got people coming across Hancock.
Well, see, that was my original idea, was you come here, then go here, and then you gotta cut, you got two lanes.